Looked pretty good.
Went on this beautiful, apparently, summer day. This is our regular select board meeting of May tenth, twenty twenty-two. And if you would join me, we will start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
The orders are circulating. And I will express Mr. Donardo's apologies for not being able to be here this evening. He's out of state on a business matter, so he will not be able to make it this evening. I'd also like to announce that or let you know that our town constable and our clerk of the works, John Paul Fagnant is presently under the weather. We know not the affliction, but he sounds pretty bad. So we wish him the best and speedy recovery from whatever it is he has. The next order of business will be the approval of the minutes twenty-sixth, April twenty-sixth. You have those in front of you. What's your pleasure?
I'll move we approve.
I'll second it.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes of April twenty-sixth?
No, I note that Phil did correctly put down my statement that your characterizations were incorrect.
Yes, I appreciate him doing that because that's the full, that's the full, very brief reply.
Succinct, we call it, Don.
Correct minutes. Yes, succinct. Are there, are there any other corrections or additions, deletions? Hearing none at this time, I would ask for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, and I'm sorry, I did not indicate our membership here is Kurt Hathaway is present, Mary Ashcroft is present. I'm present as chair and Sharon Russell is present by Zoom. Thank you, Sharon. Any opposed? None opposed? Minutes approved. Okay, announcements. Are there any announcements from any of the board members?
I have one.
Mary?
Just a reminder for all department heads that the circle deadline for the upcoming circle is June first. I think that's the last circle that goes out before the summer. So, yep.
Thank you.
This one, we can add more. I know there's some that she allows a little bit more, a little bit less. Do we know if this is one? Because I would have the full schedule. So I sometimes it's like limited. So if we could, I guess I can.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary. I have one. I would, I would like to. Uh, I would like to offer the thanks of the board for all of those who participated in Green Up Day. I saw numerous, numerous green bags gathered up all across the town. And I'd like to personally, on behalf of the board, thank you all for taking such pride in the condition of our community. It's, it's much appreciated by everyone. Thank you. And the next announcement is a it's a pleasantry that that's one of those things I really appreciate being able to do as Chair of your board on behalf of the board. We deal with a lot of critical issues in here. We have some heated debates, but you know, and Kurt and Mary had a meeting this week planning one of those happy times where we have an ice cream social and a community a community party, and I'm sure we're gonna, we're going to hear about that because you have a report, Mary, I believe. But this is another one, and it's, it just gives me great pleasure to invite a scout leader and his son, who happens to be an Eagle Scout recipient, award recipient, Tristan Stute and his father Claudius, if you would come up, please, and join me right here behind the podium with the desk. First of all, it's my pleasure to meet you, Tristan.
Nice to meet you, too.
It's my pleasure to meet you, Claudius.
Thanks.
I'd like to read this. Tristan, congratulations on achieving the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout from all of us on the Rutland Town Select Board. We're extremely proud of your efforts and this great accomplishment. The nearly four thousand residents of Rutland Town join in with us as we celebrate this phenomenal accolade. Some of our country's greatest movers and shakers have also earned their Eagle Scout badge. You will soon find out, as you apply for higher levels of education and future jobs, that the decision makers who hold your future in their hands will take your Eagle Scout accomplishment into consideration. History has taught us that those who rise to this great level will go on to improve our communities in mighty ways. We look forward to seeing what the future holds for you, Tristan. Congratulations once again, sincerely, the Town of Rutland Select Board. And all five of our signatures are there. And a special thanks, thank you note from Mary Ashcroft for all your help on our projects.
Yeah, thank you.
So I salute you, Tristan. Congratulations. You've served God and country. You have served your fellow man, and you have served yourself very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Tristan.
And it's only eight percent of the Scouts in America that achieve the Eagle Scout recognition. It's a lot of hard work, I know, because I didn't make. I got the first class and I timed out because girls and sports and high school jumped right in there. So congratulations again. We're proud of you.
Thank you.
Don, could I say a word?
You can say any word you like.
Well, it might be more than one. What we have here are two members of a combined scout troop, one oh five, one twelve, and one twenty. These folks, the scouts, the scout leaders and the scouters have done amazing work in town, and I wanted to highlight some of the things that they've done. Mike Rowe is going to correct me because Mike has been one of the ones who has helped lined up Eagle Scout projects, as did Byron Hathaway. So the slate trail signs that were installed on the main loop were done by the scouts. Landscaping and root cutting on the main loop was done by the scouts. Mulching, I remember doing a lot of mulching. The landscaping at the highway garage was an Eagle Scout project. A set of bleachers was built by the scouts. The dugouts were painted by the scouts. And if I remember right, Tristan, you got more on your hands than you did on the dugouts. That was a while ago.
Yeah.
The Cheney Hills Cemetery gravestones were fixed, and we had a few scouts helping us with the construction of the playground at the top of, near the tennis courts. So thank you for all your work, and we've got you lined up to do more.
We have more coming through.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One of those benefits that you might, I don't know if you know about it, Tristan, but one of the benefits of Eagle Scout rank is that if you should choose to enter the military service, you can enter as an E three automatically instead of a private E one. Now, you don't receive that rank immediately because you have to go through basic training, but upon completion of basic training, you will automatically be awarded E three rather than E one, which is a substantial difference in pay grade. So, and recognition. So just thought I'd mention that because it's one of those things that goes along with the accomplishments that you have. So. Okay, we're at the point. Are there any other announcements from any of the board members? Any announcements from anyone in the public? Chris, did you have anything you wanted to address? Pardon me?
I'm on the agenda.
Oh, okay, okay. Any member of the public who's not on the agenda wish to speak this evening, either virtually or here at the meeting? Hearing none, we'll go for the department head reports. The first report is from our road commissioner, Walt Tripp. Welcome this evening, Walt.
Good evening. Have much. Got our chipper back yesterday, so we're catching up on all of our trees and brush and whatever else. We picked up fifty-nine green up bags. So as you said, a big thank you to everybody that helped. And other than that, saving their contract for you, right, needs to be signed.
I can, I can see no reason why we wouldn't do that at this point.
Copy the signs in the folder.
Pardon me?
Copy the sign is in the folder.
Everyone's received the paving bids. And the the contract is basically the same contract that we had last year. If you haven't read the whole thing, I mean, the terms and conditions are pretty much the same. The only thing that's changed are the dates and obviously it goes to be paved.
I'll move we I think we've accepted the bid, so I'll move that we authorize our select board chair to sign on behalf of the select board to complete the contract with, this is Fuller Sand and Gravel.
Motion made by Mary to accept the contract as proposed by Fuller Sand and Gravel and authorizing the chair to sign on behalf of the board.
Second that.
The second by Kurt. Any discussion?
Walt, does Fuller's note understand they have to wait until after the box covert for town line road?
Yeah, that was in the bid. That was a separate article, basically. He understands that.
Awesome. That's about it.
Sharon, you have any comment or?
Nope.
Nope, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is approved.
I'll take care of it.
Anything else, Walt?
That's all I had.
Okay, let's, we might as well, we might as well deal with this signage issue now, as long as you're here, you know. The, is the board aware of the Sugarwood Hill signing issue?
No, well.
Don.
Let me, let me briefly explain. There are residents on Sugarwood Hill Extension who have complained how for well, a number of years, it's been ongoing. It isn't a continuous problem, but it's a pervasive one. Depending on who the delivery person is, or who the mail person is, or whether it's a substitute or a regular. But the problem occurred because of the, because of the nine-one-one requirements when you do an extension of a road. And when we did the Sugarwood Hill Extension, which is up at the far end, after you make the left-hand Y, the numbering starts anew. Which means that there was a sign there now saying Sugarwood Hill Lane. And the numbers are, I don't know exactly what they are, two fifty-two, two ninety-two to three forty-two, whatever it is. Those are the numbers of the original road that was put in. And when Sugarwood Hill Extension was put in at the far end of that, which is a circle, which there's four, probably four, possibly five, because one goes off down to the side. I believe there's a total of five that access from that road. The requirement is that you start anew. Well, people, different people at different times have been having a problem finding out where early numbers are because usually start in, you expect that the road's going to start with the low numbers, and it's going to continue on, and you don't expect you're going to get to the end, and all of a sudden you're going to start with twenty, twenty-five. Again, so packages have not been delivered correctly, and it's been quite a problem. And the problem only exists when we get this particular situation of a road that's already there and something's added on to the end of it. So it isn't some kind of an endemic problem that people are going to say, well, I want my road numbered, too. All the roads are numbered basically the same. If we, if we ended up with the same problem in another development, I would assume we would want to do the same thing, which is put some additional signing there that so that it tells people that even though this says Sugarwood Lane, that up ahead is another road which has lower numbers so that they don't think they've already gone by twenty or thirty because they're at two hundred. And that's what's happened with a lot of people. They've, they've wandered around trying to find these lower numbers, thinking that they're, they come in front of the higher numbers. So I guess it's a, it's a matter of what, a hundred, hundred and fifty bucks or whatever, not very expensive. If we put if we, there's already a sign there, if we put another sign saying Sugarwood Hill Extension, and we put an arrow going that same left direction, and then we put numbers fifty to seventy or whatever the numbers are, it'll solve that problem. And I just, I thought, well, I didn't really know whether it needed board approval or not. I just, I just think it's a it's a wise service for safety alone. I mean, if I'm going to make a mistake and the board's going to make a mistake, I think we should make a mistake in favor of safety so that there's never a possibility of somebody saying, well, nine-one-one didn't get there in time because they didn't really know where the twenty was because the three, you know, it just doesn't, doesn't make sense. So anyways, Mary.
So the nine-one-one coordinator for the town is Howard Burgess.
Right.
And when issues like this have come up in the past, Howard comes in with a map, so we don't have to rely on a verbal description, which is confusing to me. And Howard comes in with a map, and he explains the options, and he usually by that time has checked with the nine-one-one folks to make sure whatever is being proposed conforms with them. So I suggest rather than trying to do anything tonight, we ask Howard if he's, he'd be willing to come in in a couple of weeks with with a map and just, and maybe you can explain the problem, or maybe he already knows of the problem.
Well, he does. He asked.
Don, 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 I called, because I called Howard because I was confused. And I asked him if he.
Boost the volume up a little bit. Excuse me, Sharon. I just wanted to get the volume high enough so we can all hear you.
Oh, okay. So I called Howard and I asked him, I said, can you explain it to me? He said, Sharon, it would be easier if I came in and, and I'll send everybody all of the information, I'll email it to them, but I would like to come in and explain it to everybody. And I think for the sake of two weeks, we're better served to let him come in so that we all completely understand it. That's just my take.
Well, I don't, I don't have any problem with that.
Howard, Don, is that something he wants to do?
Yes, Don, I can do that, and I'll put something together and be at your next meeting.
Thank you, Howard.
I would think since this, since this has been going on for four years, I would imagine waiting a couple of weeks is not going to make a difference. No, but, you know.
Yeah, we'll get Howard's input and get something resolved.
Okay, thanks, Howard. I appreciate that.
Okay, will do. Yep, thank you.
Good. There you go.
Hey.
Thanks, Walt.
Thank you.
Jason? Our water and sewer commissioner, Jason Bathlon.
Good evening.
Hi, Jason. Good to see you.
See you. Last week I mentioned that I received a list from Billy that Andreas had requested for me to go out and touch base on some of these hairy situations of where some of the debris has built up on the drainage and stuff like that up by Susan Lane. And I did get out there, I did a before and after picture, let me clean it up, and I sent it over to him and his assistant Maddie. And she got back to me and said that she'd let me know any further issues, if there's any. So I got that list completed. I did go over to Windmere, check it out, and there's no obstruction or anything like that with debris or anything in the drainage. The landscapers that do up on that property seem to keep that pretty clean.
Good.
That's all.
So no issues?
No issues, not yet.
All is calm in the water department.
Yeah, so far so good. Don't jinx me.
Great. Any questions of Jason?
Just that we kind of left Mr. Robishow, I think, hanging on the and I think the Water Sewer Committee was going to meet and talk about who pays the cost for cup. And I'm just wondering if the committee has met to discuss that.
We haven't met. It seemed, seemed like he was all set after that meeting where he was here and we awarded the grant. It seemed like he he understood where we were coming from.
I, I agree.
Yeah, he hasn't reached out to me again, so I think we should be all set unless I hear more from him.
Yeah, I don't, I I think you're right, Kurt. I think he was satisfied with our answer and.
I think once we explained everything, I think he, he understood.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Because.
Fine. Any other questions of Jason? Thank you, Jason.
Absolutely.
Carrie Clark. Our town clerk, treasure. Hi, Carrie.
Not much for tonight. We had a tax day today, last installment for the fiscal year. So reminder to anyone that's listening, if you are looking to pay your taxes tomorrow or thereafter, there will be an unfortunate penalty and interest added to your payment because the deadline was today. But we did have a great turnout, and we'll have final numbers for you next time. And in front of you is a, our audit letter from AM Peisch. I know it feels like we just got over our audit process, but he'd like to get the next one started pretty early. So, Don, if you haven't already, there's two copies of the commitment letter to sign, and I'll sign underneath you or wherever the signature is. We keep one copy and send the other to Andrew. So at your convenience, sign those. And that is it. Is there any questions?
How much is it this year?
I have the, the quote right in the document that says, based on our preliminary estimates, the fiat or reduced governmental rates should not exceed sixteen thousand dollars. Our invoices for these fees will be rendered each month as work progresses and are payable on presentation. And the rest of the contract is pretty much boilerplate that we've seen.
I would move we approve the audit contract with AM Peisch.
Motion, motions made to approve the contract for auditing with AM Peisch.
Seconded.
And seconded, any discussion?
They've done a really good job for us, and they've been very much available to Carrie when she has those questions that come in.
And continue to be with questions that we have as we're approaching the end of our fiscal year with some critical areas that need to be addressed. Is there any further discussion on the contract proposal? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, and I'm assuming that you also are authorizing me to sign on behalf of the town, since there's one signature here. Was that a part of your motion, Mary?
Yes, it was. I'm glad you picked up on that, Don.
Thank you very much. Okay, Chris Clark, town fire chief. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening. The last two weeks, we had seven calls, pretty light two weeks. And we went to the parade. Don got to ride front seat. So thanks for that. It went well. I really have nothing else to report to you. Oh, the new truck, we're going out on Sunday. We're, four of us are going to Minnesota to finally do the final inspection. So hopefully that'll go well, and then they'll get to the next step and finishing the truck up.
That's it, Chris?
That's all I got.
Thanks for we got, thanks, thanks for covering for me because I was, I should have mentioned that at the beginning, but it's just as well. We had a really good contingent of, of fire persons because we have a very diversified fire department. And they looked really, really sharp in their dress uniforms. And as did you, chief, and I really appreciated not having to walk the parade, so thank you for the ride. And it was very well attended. You know, especially considering that COVID was done, and it was the first time people got a chance to get out. There were, there were hundreds and hundreds on corners all over the parade route. So thanks again, and thanks for representing the town the way you do. We were, we were very well received at the at the, at the podium when we passed. We got a pretty loud applause, so that's nice. Mary, you had a comment?
Yes, Chief, select board member Kurt Hathaway will be coming to talk with you about the townwide celebration day on August twenty-seventh. I believe he would like to set up a water polo match and perhaps some displays of our town fire trucks, maybe even the new one if it's in, so.
Yep.
Set you up, good.
Yep.
Are you still there, chief?
I'm here. That sounds good to me.
Thank you.
You still digesting water polo. I can remember some really great times with that one.
Oh, it's always a good time.
Oh, it's a good chance. Practice is a good chance to get even with whoever has been bugging you at the fire meetings, I'll tell you that.
Oh, no, never, never.
Good. Okay, Chris, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Barbara Pulling, our town planning commission chairman. Hi, Barb, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Nothing to report from the town planning commission. We haven't met since. Um, nothing to report from the Town Planning Commission. Um, we haven't met since, um, you last had a meeting. We have, we do have a meeting Thursday night. Um, and then from the Regional Planning Commission Corner, um, with the Pocket Park Grant, that is wrapping up. And, um, I sent you folks a final report uh, that, um, covered some of the background, covered what was required in the grant and, uh, and some five recommendations coming out of what we've been doing for the last, uh, almost two years with that grant. So I'm not sure if you want me to go into more detail than that this evening. Um, that, that grant does need to wrap up, um, by the end of June.
Um, so I wouldn't, I would move that we accept the final grant report and authorize the chair to put in for the final installment for payment to the Regional Planning Commission.
Okay, good. I was assuming that's what you wanted, Barbara, anyway, was, uh, authorization to do that.
Well, that, yeah, that's, that's one of them. And, and then, um, uh, Bill will need to, uh, finish off the, the grant with the, uh, the state system. Um, he'll need to do the final reporting and, um, the final finances, uh, with that, with the gears. It's called the gear system. And that all needs to be done by the end of June as well.
Okay. Motion has been made, um, to approve the finalization of the grant and, um, is there a second of the motion?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded.
And to authorize the chair to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I don't have that in the pack, do I, Bill? No, okay. Uh, is there any, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Waiting for a third vote.
I said aye.
Oh. Just so that I'm.
Recognize me, so I guess you can't hear me.
Well, I didn't hear, I didn't hear a vote, Sharon. I'm sorry. It could be my hearing aids. Kurt, did you hear?
I think it's been cutting in and out a little bit. I don't know if the internet's slow. Oh, it's the phones?
No.
Okay.
No, it's that, it's the phone service, Sharon. So we apologize. Thank you very much. Um, any, obviously there's no one opposed. We have, we have three votes. That's a majority and I will sign that soon as I see it, Bill. I don't know where it is, but.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll get you when you're ready. I'll get it.
Okay, good. There you go, Barb. What else you got?
Um, that's about it. One of the five recommendations was to, was an offer to use the Town Planning Commission as needed, um, going forward. With the design or, you know, or being, you know, speaking for the select board in certain, um, circumstances. Um, so, uh, if, if you would keep that in mind, uh, the group would, would love to continue on this project.
Well, if it's part of the five recommendations that's just been approved, motion made, seconded and voted on. So you have that authorization already. So.
Yeah.
And we thank you for, uh, agreeing to do that. Uh, everything except for the payment of the bill, we have to approve that.
And I probably shouldn't have said speaking for the select board, but hopefully you know what I mean there.
No, but I do, I do. And, uh, having been there before, Barb, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm well aware of how much work that entails. And it really does make a lot of sense to short circus, uh, short circuit this process of, uh, on, on minutia details having to come back to the board because we trust your judgment. You've done the, you've done the hard work and the yeoman work on the project to this, to this point. Uh, I don't see why that wouldn't continue and you guys know what you're doing. So have at it.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments from the board? But we've.
Um, just a big thanks, Barbara, to the whole planning commission and you're going to be on the lookout for grants for the next steps, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Get us as much as you can, Barb. Thank you.
Okay.
And, and thank you this evening. You'll have, have a nice evening.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, our next report is Ed Dumas, our Town Police Chief. With probably some scintillating news from the south section.
Things not changed much other than we're getting busier. Uh, so the first page of the report, you'll notice that we have listed, uh, Ted is, uh, Deputy Chief Washman is listed out. Uh, we had forty-one traffic stops. We had thirty-seven calls for service. We had fourteen arrests. And the, I noticed a BSP there calls for service in the town in the Southern area is thirty-seven. So we're generating quite a bit of, uh, interest down. If you go to the last page, I just want to point out something that's happening. All of the city and the town is petty larcenies from, uh, motor vehicles. There's, uh, a group of individuals, if you will. I don't think they're working in, maybe they are working together, but they're, if you leave your car unlocked, parked in your driveway, in the middle of the night, they're coming by, they're opening your car door, they're taking two or three dollars with the change you have there, sometimes more, sometimes less, and anything you have in your car of value, they're going to take and pawn it and sell it, whatever. So you think you only have three or four dollars in your car, but when they break into fifty to a hundred cars a night, that adds up to quite a chunk of change for them, these people to, uh, help, uh, with whatever they do, probably to increase their drug habit. So have to pay for anything. That's all I have for calls for service in that area there. Again, if you look in now, we have most of the calls are in the US Route Seven South area.
Did you want to talk about that meeting at all?
We did, we did have a, a regional dispatch meeting today. We got together with a small working group. And I guess everything's kind of stalled right now. It came out of the, uh, talking about, uh, having it go into a study or whatever they want to, I don't know sure what they call it, but they study the fact that what are we going to do with the regional dispatch? And then we'll have those results back until, uh, December of this year. And we looked at, uh, other sections in the law. A couple of notes under Title twenty-four, basically chapter one twenty-one, forty-nine, ninety-two. That's a long section of the chapter, basically about creating an organization. It's a major hurdle. Every town would have to put on their ballot and vote for it. If we wanted it to start a regional dispatch, so we've asked, uh, Dave Fox, the sheriff, to step it up. We're going to, well, right now everything's on hold because of the study they want to do in the, I think it's out of the House. So.
Who's, who's initiating this study? The House of Representatives?
I think it is, yes. Don't quote me on it.
So they want, they want, they want you or us to hold up on what we're doing until December, until they finish this stuff?
They have the eleven million dollars and we can't do anything until they get their study done. So we're kind of waiting. We can't just go ahead and do any, do anything. Uh, there's a couple departments that have talked about putting in this next year budget, putting something in their budget to move forward. I don't know if we'll do that or not. Uh, we talked about some numbers when we get together with, uh, the sheriff and look at our numbers, the department, PD's, Rotten Town PD's. Right now, we're probably the next busiest agency in Rotten County. Uh, other than Rotten City and the State Police, just simply, actually, we're, we're busier than the State Police.
I'm, I'm.
Because of all the traffic at the, or the people that live at the Cortina.
I guess I'm confused. I really am confused.
Okay.
And here's why I'm confused. This situation exists because the state said they're not going to dispatch anymore.
Correct.
So then they tasked the local communities to get together to decide what we were going to do to replace the state-paid-for dispatch that was previously in existence.
Correct.
So now you're doing that. Is there a deadline for the eleven million? Because you're, uh, that, well, you've done a great job. I mean,
So.
Quite frankly, we wouldn't even be where we are now if you hadn't taken the bull by the horns and, and organized this thing and so forth and, and with the sheriff. And I talked to Steve Bernard and, and, uh, as a county judge, he's in, he's definitely in favor of, of the funding mechanism. Uh, he's got to talk to his colleague to see if she is as well. Um, but you, you have as a goal to try to secure a location because we have to pay for that. That, you can't take that out of grant money. But the equipment and the other money comes from this eleven million. So I'm wondering what it is that the state, why is the state involved in? What are they involved with? What are they going to study? We, we've already been told what we have to do. I don't understand.
It might not be a bad thing.
Oh, well.
Well, just, just, and, and I don't know enough about it, but there was eleven thou, eleven million bucks and there were a couple of other departments or areas in the state who are already ahead of us and ready to leap on it. Now it sounds like that spending is on hold. So until December and the study finishes, so we may have a chance to catch up and put in our own proposal to get a share of that eleven thousand. So I don't see this as all necessarily bad.
Million. Eleven million.
Eleven million, sorry. Did I say, yeah, eleven million. It's going to take more.
So we don't stop planning?
No, we're going to continue planning. We're, we're going to, the, uh, to start an organization is a major hurdle for Rotten County to have every town on board to put it on their ballot, uh, accept it and want it and fund it. That's, that could take years. I think, you know, the Chitting County worked on it. I was told twenty years before they got to where they're at right now, trying to get something going forward. And now either individual PDs and fire departments and EMS have to step up and put something in their budget to give to whoever is going to, whatever entity is going to take over the dispatching. Uh, in the meantime, if State Police pulls back or maybe they'll, who knows, maybe the state of Montana say, well, you can't, you can't end dispatching in July of twenty, two thousand twenty-four because they're not ready yet. It may reduce. The biggest thing everything comes down to is manning. There's, they can't find people to work. That's the issue. State Police, our sheriff, he's had, looking for a full-time and a part-time dispatcher and can't get anybody to even apply for the job.
Well, is, is there, is there some kind of a time limit on this eleven million dollars? Does it have to be spent?
We were, we got in a group, we figured out how to, how to, how we, what the, what the, uh, process was to put in for it and the gives and takes and what, what we were allowed and all this other stuff. And that, we did our part and now it's, it's just, I don't know what they're doing. I'm sure they're looking at it. I'm not pretty that knowledgeable, so I don't know what to tell you.
Okay, well, I, I was just wondering whether, whether you have, whether you have an intention of, of putting a draft proposal for approval by the, we already have enough signatories on our documents, correct? Uh, that adds up to at least.
I think I've gotten, Bill, we gotten back three? That's it? Three out of how many towns?
Yeah, I know there's one more on the line.
I wasn't sure that wh, wh, the one Nelson Tiff did was a, a yes or a no. I couldn't quite figure that.
I think it was, I took it as a no.
Okay.
I think he, I think he wants to stick with what we're doing now.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of pushback in all the towns. They just wanted to stay the way it is. Why, why do we have to change at this point in time? The state, the state said, no, we need less PSAP. So they got rid of Rotten. They moved it down to Westminster. They moved one up north. That was going to save us money. It's cost us more money. And now they're saying, oh yeah, by the way, we, we don't have enough manpower because of COVID and whatnot. And they say, now that's not good enough. So we need more PSAPs in case one of the PSAPs we already have goes down. So and now the state is going to do a study to tell us more about how we should do this. So far, they haven't done a very good job of telling us what to do. I don't think so far, everything they've done has cost us lots of money and that's the way it is.
Do we know where the League of Cities and Towns is on this?
They, they're starting, they want us, some organization they're starting, Vermont League of Cities and Towns is involved in it. It's just a committee they want to put together to start the organization or something. I don't know all the details, uh, but they're involved. They want the sheriff. They want police chief. They want EMS, the firemen. They want the state police. Everybody is to be on this committee to try to work something out. So we'll see what happens.
Well, that's where the cloud is.
Yes.
Yeah. So you're saying for the way it's looking now, it's going to be more efficient if we try to get a different agency to pick up the dispatching instead of trying to make a new.
The quickest, fastest ways for whoever dispatches currently, there's two in Rotten County. I'm where we got, they got the Rotten County Sheriff's, you got the city.
City central.
The city, I don't think, I don't think they want to do it, but it's a lot to bite off, a lot of responsibility, hire more people to cover all the other agencies. And, uh, Dave Fox, not real big on the idea, but he understands that my, he wants, he's looking for funding. He doesn't want to like send a bill out to Polley for forty thousand dollars for, for dispatching. Then he's, they go, I will take dispatching, but we don't want your sheriff there anymore, patrol of the town. So I told him, I said, hey, if that happens, we got a place down here in the south end of town. We can get you hired twenty-four seven, call the Cortina. That was his response too. So. That's well, that's about all I have. I did give you the latest numbers, uh, last numbers on five, six that I have is a hundred and forty-three rooms rented, hundred and sixty-two adults and fifteen children. Well, Dave did look at some numbers. He mentioned something in the tune of a hundred thousand dollars a dispatch for Rotten Town with the current numbers we're running at this point in time. And that, those numbers are running at this point in time is because of that Cortina. We're busy, we're, at this point, we're double the calls. Last year, this point, we're a little at, little over three hundred, or over six hundred calls right now. On our way to seven hundred. That's doubled from last year. It's not slowing down at all. All based on the fact the state decided to put, uh, homeless shelters down to Cortina. That's my personal opinion.
Yep. Ed, how many rooms are in that Cortina again?
Hundred and fifty.
So.
Doesn't make sense, does it?
Hundred and sixty-two rooms.
You'd think somebody would be asking why they're paying for ghost rooms.
Yeah. I don't know. They sleep in the aisles or something.
I mean, at a hundred and eighty-nine dollars a piece per night, we're talking a lot of extra money for rooms that don't exist. What's our deadline, Bill? We, uh, we discussed that today. What was it?
Um, we would need to discuss it at the May twenty-fourth meeting. May twentieth is thirty days.
Okay, so, uh, we yeah, we would be, uh, we would be discussing potential board action at the twenty-fourth meeting. So uh, unless he responds to the letter that we've sent. So um, okay. Thanks, Ed.
You're welcome.
Oh, sorry. Townwide Celebration?
Yes.
The, the question that I had about the use of the speed cart, is it feasible?
Yes, it is. Uh, Ted's just got to look at the, I think we can lower the, down to zero. So if you, we should be able to get something on the.
Okay.
Especially if you saw a guy running it registered. So we should get it down. He hasn't looked at it yet, but we should be able to.
Okay, good.
Okay.
That, we, we thought of, of having the speed cart up at and have a youngsters or whoever else wants to try it, see if they can beat the machine and flash the number as they're running by.
Who can run the fastest?
That's right. And I envision, you know, fire department versus police department and all sorts of things.
And what are we going to do for people that are going by at eighty miles an hour?
No, no, this, this is non-motorized runners.
Oh, runners?
Yes.
Oh, well, that's, that's good to know. We're going to arrest them. Mike Rowe. Our Town Recreation Director.
Evening. How are you all?
Good, good. You're officially in your shorts for the duration.
So we tell them to spend three months, but it's been three months. It's okay, we won't. Uh, the tan is kicking in. That's the good part. Uh, big thank you to Jason. They got the chipper and I didn't see the text. And by the time I saw the text, he had it all. He had the pool and, uh, rode down to the pool all cleaned up, which got pretty beat up. Which got pretty beat up over the winter. Um, which will lead us into a cleanup day on the disc golf course, which got beat up pretty good as well. So we will do a chipper day on the twenty-first of uh, May from ten to twelve. So I've already alerted our disc golf people and other people. Um, they will be there to help uh, drag stuff over and we'll chip it up and get it looking nice because Jason, with the help of Jason, it's, we're mowing it and we've seeded it. And we'll seed it again and it's becoming a nice little course. Like I said, we're putting in the other nine. We'll work on that as the summer goes. Baseball is often running. Um, Bill has graciously put all the schedules up online. Um, the Mighty Mites, which are the grades one, two, they will start next week with games. So if you want to have a little bit of a laugh and cheer some kids on, you got nothing, sit in the nice bleachers that were built by our Eagle Scouts and painted by our Douglas, painted by these little scouts, then please, um, feel free to, you know, check out a game and support the kids as they um, have a great time outside. Um, the pool is, um, I spent the weekend um, power washing the pool. Um, there are some um, cracks um, that I will fill to the best of my ability or at the upper end of the pool, not down low there along the edge. So I will find the compound that I use and fill those. It's sparkly. If anybody wants to walk the incline and go down into the bowels of the pool where everything has been sprayed into yet, that is not yet been cleaned out. It's a nice color green. It's got a funky smell, a couple frogs. Um, that's uh, in two weeks, I'll be working to get that cleaned out. I have some helpers coming in because that's um, that's a fun job. Um, and then we will fill it and be ready to go, just like we normally do. Which is, we'll turn it on the first, uh, we turn it on over Memorial Day weekend and then hopefully first weekend in June, we will have people swimming. So that's kind of where we're at. It's moving very rapidly. Other than that, park's looking good. I'm on my third mo or my fourth mo at this point. Yes, it is growing. It is going quickly. Um, so we're, we're moving along well. Um, I don't think I have anything else other than that workday. Kind of cruise along. Do you have any townwide celebration stuff you want to ask or? Well, you've asked everybody, so I
I know, I know.
I feel kind of left out.
I'm sorry about that.
We did.
Pickleball. Sharon Russell is wondering if we can do something that will highlight the new pickleball courts as, which I think is a great idea, as in a small tournament or a demonstration on the game or something like that.
Sure, we can do that. Um, I haven't painted the lines yet and I'm sure they're way back and busied up. But as soon as they're in, then the nets will go in and uh, the fencing's already there. Um, Prodigal will be doing the fencing over Dewey as soon as it comes off the truck, he said, in the next couple of weeks. But we can definitely do some kind of a pickleball uh, demonstration because we will have paddles at the pool that people can borrow to go up and play if they would like to do that. I think it's going to be a huge, it was only two courts, but I think it'll be fun and Sharon's already talking trash, so I gotta go put the smackdown on her and uh, you know, take her out. Um, yeah, that's that's uh, I'll, we'll bet a case of meatballs. My meatballs against your meatballs. Um,
Yeah, so the, the jelly green giant got put down by the, the little pea, so be careful.
So careful who you challenge too, because you know, I've been known to make a pretty meat, pretty good meatball myself.
Sure she's paying attention.
You don't make me, put me down choppy.
Most, most definitely, we will, we'll do something uh, to highlight that. Um, other than that, we are on the third for the Fourth of July fireworks on the third. That's what we're going with. So we'll make sure we're all set for that. So we just have to talk with Ed and fire guys and do our usual thing, um, which would be awesome. Cause I, we'll see who else to shoot them off, but it could be busy if we're the only ones shooting them off that night. Other than that, I don't think I have much. Unless you guys have questions for me.
No, we signed off on your depreciation.
I don't know what you signed. There's three things that probably went through you. One was the uh, oh, was the fencing for, that hasn't been, that bill hasn't come through yet, so you shouldn't have signed off on it. Cause he hasn't done the work yet.
As in there somewhere.
You sign off.
The pink one, Mary, I think it is.
For two hundred and something.
Two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. Okay, that's for posts and hardware from Amazon business.
Yep. So we've been doing busy with them. We
Guess we haven't drained the account yet, have we?
No, we haven't, Bill. We're close though. Uh, and the nets are up, the new tennis nets are up at the park. Um, I was waiting for hardware that came in and that's probably what that is. So people go up and play and everything's a good shit. That's all I got.
Does anyone have any questions for Mike Rowe? Thanks, Mike.
No problem.
Thank you, Mike.
Did you say, hey, Mike?
I think so.
She did.
Sharon, what?
No, I just said, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
You said, hey. It's your phone. It's your phone. I can't do anything about that.
Ah, the trash talking continues.
Sharon, Sharon and I have talked about that. We, we've come to the conclusion that we're going to run a, we're going to run a, a stretch wire with a tin can because the communication is probably better on that than it is on AT&T, which I have as a service. Terrible. Anyways, that's, um, uh, John Paul Fagnett, town health officer, public safety building clerk and second constable is not with us, but you have a report from him. Uh, that you have in the email. Uh, JP uh, did respond to a garbage, wow, a trash complaint at the uh, at the Cortina Inn. Uh, and there was a forty-yard roll-off out behind the uh, facility that was loaded to the gills and plus, because I went down and looked at it and it was about six feet above the rim. So, uh, I took it upon myself to call Focella and just ask him what was going on with that because obviously it was just sitting there. And the answer I got were, was, I got three answers. The, the first answer was that upon inspection, they found number one, that there were significant number of needles that were in the container and they have a policy, Casella has a policy company-wide that they do not pick up containers that contain syringes. It's a strict policy. So that was number one. And so they were going to, or had given a message to the, to the owners that until the needles were taken out of there, that it wouldn't be picked up. That, the second reason was that Casella has a policy, uh, which is an AOT policy, that uh, they cannot haul forty-yard roll-offs over the road that are even one inch over the rim of the container. It's the same rule for log trucks and whatever. So uh, they would not remove that container until the five or six feet of garbage bags above the rim were transferred into another container. That was number two. And number three, uh, apparently they were fifty-two hundred dollars in arrears on their bill. And the answer they were given was, well, when those other two things and the bill has been paid, we'll pick up the container. The, the containers have been picked up, so I'm assuming that those issues were corrected. But they weren't alluded to in the answer given to us by Mr. Satchdev. That doesn't surprise me, but I just thought it was important for the board to know that, uh,
That must be what the extra twelve rooms were for, was to pay for the dumpster.
Oh, maybe, uh, yeah, I, it's it's hard to figure out, but it's, we'll we're doing everything in our power and you know, that's, so we just, we've given them the time to deal with it and then if they don't, we'll see if we can accomplish it through another legal means. Anyways, that's the last that I heard uh, from that, um, from the health officer report. So uh, we did get that problem solved. Um, and that's pretty much it. Um, Bill Sweet, our town administrative assistant, next report. Evening, Bill.
Good evening. All right, uh, not doing too bad. Uh, so for your packet, for uh, A is for new business item. Uh, two meeting room requests. Uh, we have uh, one person making requests. Uh, Chris is in the room here. And Dave Fernandez for the other request is online, uh, for when you get to that. Uh, B is the uh, sewer allocation increase request, uh, based upon the letters we sent out. And then uh, the other items, the balance, the items here. Uh, letter C, so this is what we spoke about the other day. There's a grant opportunity coming up for the um, bicycle and pedestrian program. The deadline for the application is one PM on June eighth. This is the construction grant that we can use to create the JP sidewalk. Uh, I have here the draft report from Dufrane Henry, which has been submitted to V-Trans. V-Trans agreed to shorten their review process from four weeks to three weeks. And Dufrane Henry has said that if they do that, they can get it to us for our June seventh meeting. So we can get the, we can get the report, well, the final report ready then. Uh, at that point, we will need to decide, are we going to apply for the grant the next morning? That's the deadline.
That's the deadline.
So our board meetings, June seventh, the deadline for the grant application is June eighth. So, so I have a copy, which I'll leave in my office. Uh, it's been pretty long, so I didn't want to print it out, print a bunch of copies out, but um, if anybody wants to see it, I'll have it. This is what went to V-Trans. We have a final copy at our June seventh meeting to discuss. Uh, and our, our uh, contact there will be joining the meeting to discuss the report. So.
So what, what you need from the board, as I understand it, is uh, wh- what you'd like is authorization from the board, uh, for you to facilitate this so that we can meet these timelines. Because we're on too short a fuse to be going back and forth.
Yeah, no, I'm wondering why we have to wait until the June seventh meeting.
Because that's when we have to give, they have to give V-Trans the weeks, the few weeks to review this. The V-Trans gives them back their, their feedback. They incorporate the feedback into the final report and give us the final report. And so that the way the timeline lines up is the, the very first board meeting we can get that to is June seventh. We can't get any sooner than that.
But if we authorize you to go ahead and apply for the grant anyway and be prepared, you can have everything ready to go and then just submit the
Yes.
Okay.
The, the grant application, if, letter, letter C in your packet.
Yeah.
The grant application is part of that, of what I included there. It's four pages.
Yeah.
It's not really all that difficult.
Okay.
Uh, it's just, it's, it's, we can have it pretty much ready to go. Uh, but we would just need to decide on June seventh to go ahead and, and apply for it based upon if we like it or not.
So what's your pleasure? You want to authorize our administrator to?
Let's, how about if we if we take this up at our June, or May twenty-fourth meeting, just to make sure everything is
We don't need to decide right now. It's, it's, we could, I mean, we, we don't do this, it's important, we make the decision on June seventh, yes or no, because then I can actually apply for it the next day. So.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter to me.
That, it's fine, June seventh is fine.
Long as we get it done.
Yep.
I'm just wondering why we'd wait, you know?
If we know we're going to apply for it, I'm kind of of the same.
So we, we had, we had applied for it.
Yeah.
And they told us, we don't have a scoping study, so no, we can't have it.
Okay.
But if you'd like to amend your application to a scoping study, we'll give you that. So that's how we got to this point.
Okay.
So we were awarded the grant for the scoping study, which is what we're, which we're doing now. And then we can take this and say, okay, great. Now we've got a scoping study. We'd like the money to build it, please.
Okay.
Find us a match. So.
All right.
Yep.
So we're waiting?
It's, it, it
I'd, I'd like, I like to clear my desk.
That's what I'm saying, you know, okay, everybody noticed, we're agreeing on this one, Don.
Mark that down for posterity.
So I'm thinking if
Mary, we agree on a lot more than we disagree.
Yeah, I'm not going to go ahead and get into that. Why don't we put it on the agenda for the twenty-fourth, just to see where we are to make sure that Dufrane Henry and the state are moving along the way we think. And if there's any delay, we should, I'd be prepared to vote on authorizing Bill to to go ahead and apply for the construction grant.
Hey, Bill, put it on your red flag list there for the twenty-fourth.
All set.
Good.
Uh, D is a copy of the three letters we received to date. Uh, in response to the letters we sent out regarding the dispatch center. So Pittsfield, Pittsburgh and the Wallingford have responded so far. And the last one, uh, letter E, uh, is something I've been working on. This is, this topic had come up from the before the technology committee, um, uh, on and off. It is uh, a company that has partnered with VLCT to provide town employees with um, uh, internet security training. Uh, anybody that has a town email address basically has access to, to this. Uh, and uh, on your desks, I left you some information related to, to this new business item. It covers the VLCT program. Uh, and uh, also on there is a, like a chart about what our, our actual cost is. So the, there's three different options. There's a twelve, a twenty-four and a certain thirty-six month option. Uh, the current program through VLCT uh, gives us one hundred percent reimbursement for two years. If you, if you see, I know there's a lot on your desks, but uh, if in that, on your desk, there's a page that looks like this, has a nice little chart attached to it. Uh, there's another module they offer, which is called, it's Compliance Plus and it covers payment card industry standards training, which would be appropriate for Carrie and Susan if they wanted to do that. It's not something we have to do. It's not uh, reimbursable by VLCT because it's not part of the, part of this program. Uh, so we could decide to add that or not. Uh, my recommendation would be that we go with the three-year plan. We have the first two years that are going to be covered for totally. And then by the time we get to the third year, we can add it to our budget. Uh, if we add the compliance training, our out-of-pocket expense for three years is twenty-three hundred dollars. If we don't add it, it's about a thousand dollars. So it is a very small amount of money for what we're going to get out of this. Uh, this is something that VLCT strongly suggests and I firmly agree that the training for our staff and our people and everybody that access, that use our network is the most important part of network security. So.
Yeah, so three to one match. So, you know.
Well, two years is completely a hundred percent reimbursable.
At this point, they haven't decided anything beyond that.
Two out of three, yeah.
It, it's, it is, it is possible that they could decide down the road, they want to add another year. So it's kind of like the safety grant. We, they do it to reduce claims. So if the claims come down enough, they may keep going. But we could sign a three-year agreement, let's say without the compliance training, and we'd be looking at about a thousand dollars final expense for that's a pretty good value.
Who's going to take the training?
Uh, it will be available to everybody.
Everyone who has a town email?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I would strongly recommend that they do that.
All right. So at some point, if we, whatever we agree to, we should make sure that the select board encourage, not just encourages, but says you really need to take this training.
The ones, it would be especially important for the five of us that are at the office, but it's important for everybody. It's because through the email, there's, it's linked, like, if, if you open an email and you click on a bad link and it gets to your address book, then it goes out to everybody and then it just, that's how they kind of work. So it doesn't, you know, it matters where it is, but it, it can also not matter where it is. So this is, this is a good, a good opportunity and, and VLCT put together a very good program for us to be able to, to use that. So.
You, you mentioned to, you mentioned to me that you have taken some intermediate, intermediate steps in terms of
Yes.
ransomware.
We, we have, we have other, we have other things in place. This is a different avenue.
Right.
Because the, if, if someone download, goes to, gets an email and, and download and clicks download, goes to, gets an email and, and download, and clicks on the link and downloads the file, there's, there's no, we don't have anything that can prevent that. I mean, we have stuff that can prevent some of the, the, the bad emails to be getting through, but if one of them does, then that's a problem. A couple of months ago, I got an unusual email from the town manager for the town of St. Albans, and I was like, hmm, this doesn't look quite right. So I left it there. I called him. He's like, yep, we've been hacked, delete it. Like, so, like, some, no, nobody here, of course, but some people would say, hey, what's this? And open it up. And when you open it up, that's, that's it. Like, that's, that's all it takes. So it's, they, what they do is a lot of recognition training, which is good for your own personal information, too. You know, it's a lot of recognition training. They will send out tests, like, they will send fake emails, and we get reports on who clicks on it and who doesn't, so, yeah.
Yeah, but I wanted, I wanted the board to know and, and the public to know that our administrator takes proactive steps.
Oh, yeah.
Always thinking of us and our security.
Yeah.
Because other towns in this state and all over the country have actually been held ransom.
Oh, yeah.
With a total loss of all their stuff. I mean, it's gone, and you don't get it back unless you pay big money.
Devastating.
And he's taken steps so that if they should do this, we lose one day.
Maybe.
Now, that's not nice, but it's a lot better than.
Everything.
So, yeah, I just wanted you to know that.
So your recommend is three years?
Yeah.
And we have to pay, and then we get reimbursed?
We, it's, yes, we, it's.
Timing, well, do you think we'll be reimbursed in this fiscal year?
VLCT is pretty good. I can find out, the, the same person that does the safety grant is the one that facilitates this. So I, I can ask him, and we could, we can find that out. I, I, I don't know quite yet. The only, the only, so if, what would be your preference?
Well, I would move that we do the three-year.
Okay, I, I agree.
Motion's made that we do the three-year contract. It's a contract between no before.
We want to include the compliance training modules for Carrie.
Carrie and Sue questions, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, it covers payment card industry, so credit card thing, which is what we have. So we don't do a lot with it, but.
Does there start right away, or is it a three-year, or a one-year, or what, the, the additional?
It would all be together. So if we say three years, it's three years from now that we would look, we would be talking about renewing it.
So I'm trying to, I'm trying to read this, this pricing structure, so.
Yeah, the.
If we add the module, if we add the additional module, is that included in the 4,632?
It is.
Okay, so that would be your number, Mary.
So that's, that's why I gave you this other page, because the 4,632 is the actual total cost. Of that 4,632, $2,300 of it is reimbursed, is, comes back from VLCT.
Right.
So our, our actual cost is $2,300. Yes. So if you look at that, if you see, like, there's the total, so for one year, two year, three year, and then the total reimbursable, the two year and three years, the same, because right now it's the same for both. So our out-of-pocket expense is $2,300 for three years if we do everything.
We do everything?
Yes.
And Carrie, did, did you talk with Carrie?
I, I haven't had a chance to, they've been a little hectic, so we didn't really get into it. It's, I'm not sure we do enough, we don't do like day-to-day credit card transactions, it's really only around tax time, and we do it through a third party, so I kind of can go either way, but I think the, the first two are definitely more important.
So maybe we should skip the compliance plus for now.
I think that we, we can, I, I'd be comfortable saying we don't have to do that.
Right.
Yeah, um, we can see how it rolls, and if we need it in the future, we can get it.
If we expand our credit card processing, then it would be appropriate, but I don't.
So what would the number be then?
We, we, I, I can, I can update it. So if you just want to, if you want to have the motion, say the three years minus the compliance training, I'll take care of everything else.
Yeah.
So amended.
We, we're doing, we had a motion for a three-year contract for, on this security issue.
Minus the compliance.
Yes.
Minus the, yeah.
So if you want, if.
And we have a second to that motion.
And I'll further amend the motion to say that you should sign on behalf of the town.
You've heard the motion. Do any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Her phone doesn't catch up right away. You, you there, Sharon?
Yeah. What?
Sharon?
She cut out.
Her box, her box lit up, so she did say something.
She cut out.
I don't know, I think she.
Try one more time, Sharon.
I suggest.
Okay, there it is.
We, we thought you were stirring the sauce.
I did that earlier.
The motion carries, I will sign it.
Okay, yep, thank you. And we have received one application for the road commissioner position. So I have that. I don't know how the committee or board wants to handle it, but I.
I'd like to see.
The, um, well, yeah, well, I'll, I was going to have Joe speak to that, but Joe's not here, so I will. We had a, we kind of had a pre-meeting because this person was interested, and then we presented the application and whatever, and he did fill out the application out. And what I would like to do is, you know, obviously with the board's permission, is schedule a meeting, a special meeting next Tuesday, because Tuesday seemed to work, and I asked Joe as highway committee chair, and also Sharon as personnel committee member, along with me, that we, that we meet as a full board next Tuesday at 6 o'clock with the candidate, and.
Is that the one you met with last week, Don?
Yes.
Okay.
And the, the only other question I had, and this is open for board discussion, is whether you want any other people in on the meeting, and if so, whom? Like our road commissioner, our acting road commissioner and/or assistant.
You want to be there, Walt?
It's up to, no, it's up to the board. I mean, it's not really up to him, but, you know, this is a board decision, it's a board interview. But I don't have objection to other people being there, if the board doesn't, but I don't know whether, to tell you the truth, we haven't done this. We have never done this, because we've had an elected commissioner, but, so it's up, it's up to the board, what, what policy you want to set.
I'm thinking, I'm wondering whether it'd be beneficial to have Byron Hathaway sit in.
No, I don't, I don't think that would be appropriate.
Since he was the past commissioner.
No, I don't agree. I think, I don't agree, Mary. I think, you know, Byron's retired, it's time to move on.
Yeah, but he understands the job. He did it for what, 22 years?
So does Walt.
Sharon, what do you think about having, having Walt and/or Walt and Jason at the meeting?
I would like to see at least Walt or Walt and Jason, if you guys think, think so. But, you know, Walt's been, been running it, and in all fairness to him, I think that's who we should, should have picking his brain.
Um, I have a suggestion, which would include Walt and Jason. I, I'm just trying to think of a fairly recent job interview process that I was part of. We can certainly meet as a select board to do the initial interview, but then also have the candidate meet with Walt and Jason, and maybe have them give him a tour of our facilities, and then re, report back to the select board. That gives a couple of different chances for the people who are going to be working with him to get to know him a little better, see his reaction to our equipment, to our facilities.
Would that be before or after the interview?
Um, I don't think it matters, because we would still get their information for part, we wouldn't make a decision.
Before, because then if there were any problems that came up, either way, on a part of either party, they could, they could come up during the interview and we'd know it. Whereas if we do that after the interview, it's kind of like water over the dam, if we've already made a decision to hire.
Well, I guess that's part of my question, too, is, are we intending to interview and then make a decision Tuesday? Because I wouldn't necessarily be comfortable with that if we wanted to check references.
I would think that unless we get other applications, that we're under some kind of a, an obligation to adhere to the job description, and so, we, we, we put an, we put an ad in the paper asking people to apply. So if somebody has applied, I think we have an obligation to make a decision. I'm, I would be prepared unless there's, unless, unless something comes up that I don't foresee. I would think that we would discuss, and a motion would either be made or not made. It's up to the board, I mean. I mean, I'm not saying that we would, we would.
Why don't we have?
We wouldn't either.
Why don't we have a first interview? After the first interview, if the candidate passes, he can go up, go through a tour with Walt and Jason. If he checks all those boxes, he can come back to a sec, second interview. We can always figure out if we have more questions for him. If maybe the first interview, we need some more, you know, credentials from him, he can bring that to the second interview, and we can have a second interview.
I don't know, I don't want to drag this thing out all summer long.
Well, we're in no rush.
Talking about dragging it out all summer long. I like that approach, frankly. That's more in line with kind of what you do for.
There's a lot of people that do first and second interviews.
I'm used to that.
Yeah. Don't know, we haven't done it, we haven't done it before, Kurt, so, you know, it's new ground. I'm, uh, and I'm open to suggestions. It's not an authoritarian decision here. It's, it's a board decision. And we have two other board members. I haven't heard from Sharon yet, and she is on the personnel committee. Because we discussed whether we would do this. Actually, we had a discussion as to whether we would hold a, a separate meeting between the highway committee chair and the personnel committee, which is Sharon and myself, just the three of us, and, and the interviewee, the candidate, and then discuss all of this stuff that we're talking about, and then make a recommendation to the board. And after further discussion with both of those members, they decided, not, not I, but they decided that they would like to have the whole board make the decision, and I think that's appropriate. Yeah, but I don't want to have the board make it, you know, well, I think we've got a, we've got to get, I didn't want to say the other word, but we, you know, we could, we, we can't, we can't be dilly-dallying.
And I make a suggestion. I think Trump has the right, we have the first interview, then we can meet in executive session after that interview, see how we feel. And then at the next interview, we may know that that is the right person to hire or not.
Right, well, I agree.
So, you know, I think, I, I don't think we want.
6 o'clock is a, is 6 o'clock an appropriate time for you, Sharon, next, next Tuesday?
Uh, let me look at my calendar, hang on.
In the job description, did we say subject to a criminal background check? Because that's going to take a little bit of time.
I, I'm almost sure there's a background check component in that, but I, I, I've done some hiring in previous lives. So I, I, I have some suggestions. We could, we could talk about, there's a few, so we could talk about it later, but I got some. Okay. I, I, the, the, the first meeting next week is very appropriate.
Yeah.
And then I, I got some, I got a suggestion for you, so.
Yep.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm good with meeting on Tuesday.
You good, Sharon?
Well, that is the 17th.
That is the 17th.
And I miss another baseball game with grandson, which doesn't make me very happy, but we've got to get it done, so I think that's the best thing to do.
Okay, then.
The last time the board held interviews, the interviews were not public meetings.
No.
So I will warn it.
This is not, this will be warned as an executive session.
Right, so I'll, I'll, I'll put, I'll make that, make sure it's warned appropriately.
And you can just say personnel matter, that's all.
Okay.
Okay, good, then that's, that's a decision, and where is that?
It's, it's, I got on the desk back there, yeah.
Okay.
Didn't figure anything, anything else on your desk to take up space.
Okay, good. Bill, what, what?
You want me for the new business items, or are you all set?
I don't know, where are we here?
A, A, and B. That's all I got left. All that's left. Excuse meeting room requests, and then the sewer allocation.
Yeah, what's your, what's your pleasure, board? We got two.
So I'll start with, I would approve the request of the Rutland Town Republicans to use the select board meeting room for their caucus for.
There's a conflict there, there, Mary, now.
That's a conflict.
Same, yeah, the same day and time, the U.P.
Oh, oh, we just did it, didn't we?
So. Is downstairs available? I don't know what they, kind of, what they do with their stuff downstairs with this.
It does not get put away. That's, it's.
Oh.
Can it get?
Yeah.
Is it stuff that you would mind?
You, Mr. Harrington is on the, or Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Hernandez, I think, yeah, Mr. Hernandez is on the, is on the call, he's in charge of that, so you'd have to, you'd have to, you'd have to ask him, but that's a little short notice. I'm not, they're not here two days.
Have you?
I posted the warnings, yes, I I posted the warnings at town hall and the school in anticipation of approval. I can remove those. I can change the date. Part of the, we're trying to replace Dick Bailey as a member of the, as a JP, that's on the agenda. And then the other items, Dick Bailey was also our chair, so I've quoted three or four paragraphs of statute. Part of the discussion is caucusing with the new representative districts and the petitions for getting on the ballot by petition is May 26th at 5:00 P.M.
Okay, so you've got, I'm just thinking, do you have a backup date that you wanted to ask about?
I probably would want to move to the 18th, but I've got some members that have expressed great conflict, but more than one member has conflict. So if we can't get downstairs, then I guess.
Oh, downstairs, but that's, they're all set up for the, the COVID test.
Yeah, that's.
It's not something that can be met around. We, yeah, we could just, I, can I have it the 20th? Is it 27th the day after Labor Day, or Memorial Day? I don't know.
No. 27th is a Friday.
Oh, no, I, I'm sorry, I'm looking at June.
Yeah.
How, how long would you feel this interview process would be?
I would guess probably an hour.
No longer than an hour. We could set a deadline for an hour and meet at 5:00, and then we'll have a deadline to be out of here at 6:00.
5 is a little tougher for me, because I have a standing medical appointment with my daughter. So 5:30 would be possible for our, are you talking the interview, 5:30?
Yeah, and then do, and then have, have.
Then let them have it at 7.
6:30.
We could move to 7.
Could you move to 7? If you could move to 7?
Yeah, yes, yeah, 7, and we could.
Okay, so, so I would move that we give permission to the Rutland Town Republican Committee to have their caucus on May 17th at 7:00 P.M. here in the select boardroom.
They had a second part to the request about the waiver for the fee. If someone here will be responsible, it's at the bottom of the.
You got someone?
Several of the JPs are on the.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, I'll be, I'll be there, so.
And I do have people who.
Okay.
Howard Burgess.
Let's just say, let's just say Howard will do it. Howard, let's just say, let's just say Howard will do it.
Choppy, myself.
Okay.
Um, it's just, I mean, the code is.
So the second part is I also move we waive the fee.
Okay, motion made.
Understanding that one of the town employees who's also. Um. Uh, on the caucus will make sure that things are good.
I will be here, Mary.
Okay.
Unpermitted.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the use of the meeting room, uh, for the, uh, Rutland Town Republicans at seven o'clock on the seventeenth. And, uh, the fee be waived provided there's town employee that will take responsibility for the security of the building. Second, and we have a second to that motion. Is there any discussion?
No, just to note that the Democrat made the motion.
I don't have a copy of the, uh. Party rosters. From. Other towns. Uh, just an additional, we were intending in our agenda with the, uh. Representative districts being changed to invite, um. The legislators and potential candidates. So it's not just gonna be, what I'm trying to say is it may be people in addition to residents of Rutland Town. That may, may come into the, the twenty one capacity. Thank you.
Not a problem. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Come on, light up the box. We have to vote on this one.
Sharon.
Guess she doesn't want you guys.
Hi, Sharon.
But. But.
I think I heard a yes.
Uh huh. The box didn't light up.
Yeah.
There you go.
There you go.
All right.
There you go. We, uh. Okay, you're all set, Chris.
Okay, yeah. Um, so for A two. Um, this is the, uh, C I C health screening group and they want to. Um, continue using the space and they're requesting through the month of June. So I would move that we approve their use of the downstairs room for distribution of the lamp and antigen tests through the month of June. Twenty twenty two.
Motion made and seconded.
Yeah, I, I've got to say that I needed a test and I went downstairs and found those folks great and very professional and. No nonsense and got the tests and got the instructions needed. So I was very pleased with the service. No.
Uh, uh, motions made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, none opposed, that passes, so C I C. Well. That's A and B. One and two.
A, one and two.
A, one and two.
And we got B.
Now, we got the sewer allocation.
Yeah, this is for a, a private residence on Stratton Road that was just over for last year and, and we have a check. It's very easy. It's forty gallons. It's. Not a complicated one, so.
So I move we approve the sewer allocation for Linda Clark.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the sewer allocation for Linda Clark at four forty nine Stratton Road. Uh. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Box lit up.
Yes, it's lit up, but I'm not hearing anything. Boy, I'm, this is really.
It's not you. Just this one's.
No, I, uh, I, I.
Okay.
So do I have to sign this? I don't have to sign this. No.
That's all we need.
Think so. So.
Everything I have.
That's it. I don't think there's anything else left on here. The pack of red.
My celebration, my celebration. We have a bounce house confirmed. We, we just need, we need to provide someone to run it and Mr. Rowe has already obligated one of his lifeguard.
Oh, really? Okay, good. Yeah, the bounce house.
Yeah.
I was thinking that Kurt would, would dump, would.
I gotta play water polo.
No. We wanna see you in the bounce house.
Oh, yeah. Probably pop the thing.
That's all.
It's gonna cost the town. Um, so we received what, three letters from towns concerning the regional. Um, dispatch center. Remember when we did the reach out to towns many years ago when you, we were both on the board together? Um, and we posted on the town's website. We kept a running tally about the town's responses. Shall we do this for this?
I think we should. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't.
Okay, so let's do that.
Okay.
You know.
Sure.
Maybe by embarrassment, we'll get some more in there.
Uh, true.
Statue requires that, uh, towns that have. A website that. Caucus notices be posted to your website.
Okay, send email me, copy, I'll put it there.
Yeah.
Yep. No problem.
Good. Um.
We are, by the way, uh, three thousand one hundred and seventy two registered voters last. Approved ballot. So roughly. When we argued all this population in the town in caucusing, it works out to about eighty percent of the population being, uh. Registered voters, so twenty percent are students, non-voters i- in the town.
Hmm.
That's hot.
Twenty percent, eighteen or less?
No, no.
Right, that's what, that was my point.
Yeah.
That we, we had the question in. Redistricting that we doubted. We had some revisions to the population. My point in mentioning this is that. When my wife left four years ago, the school, she thought the number of students. Were three fifty prior to. Kindergarten, the early kindergarten. So I ran the numbers and did the, did the numbers and surprised to the eighty percent of the population registered voters. Uh, given, I don't know how many students go to Christ the King. And of course, I ha- I have to use kindergarten through eight to project. Nine, ten, eleven, or twelve.
Okay.
Still. Yeah, and I asked Carrie what, whether she had, uh, heard any more word about how the, uh. How the voting was gonna take place and. She said no, and she, she's assuming they'll probably wait till the last minute before they tell her, but. Cause there are people that are assuming that they're going to have to go to a different location to vote and our understanding is that's not going to happen. There are gonna be the. The lists will all be in the same place. You go to the same place to vote, but you.
That could be an issue for the B C A to decide. Now, I just have Mr. Shook here, who's on Cedar Avenue. Many of the people, when I do the vote check downstairs. Come over and say, I just left the school picking up my kids. So if the B C A decides to change the checklist to. Center of Grove Street, votes at the school. Then it eliminates a two-ballot situation here at town hall. People who vote at town hall will have one ballot. People who voted the school, you put a map right in the entryway and if you live. This colored section of the map, you go in the door that way.
Yes.
Section go that way. That way only the school has to contend with the. Representative district ballot in the primary. And the general election.
Well, it's gonna be fun. There's no question about it.
And maybe she could then divide the checklist. I talked to Tenworth about this and Tenworth only had. A very small number of towns that were either side of whatever the district. Right. Ten years for the last day.
Okay. Where are we here? I'll find my.
Most everything's done. Uh, the only thing I has, I will, I did put on the calendar, but I will not be here Monday and Tuesday next week.
Oh.
Any other new business to come before the board?
Well, did you want committee reports?
Yeah, let's see, uh. Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Trying to get these signed copies over here. Mary, you wanna give a report on the, uh?
About scholarship.
Yeah.
Unless Sharon wants to. You want me to do it, Sharon, or do you wanna do it?
No, go ahead, Mary. My, my throat is sore. I'm about ready to go to bed.
Okay, so I'll make this quick. Sharon and I met as a scholarship committee last Thursday to review the applications. There were six. Um, for, from Rutland Town students for the fifteen thousand dollars worth of scholarship money approved by the voters. Um, in front of you, uh, we went into executive session because we were dealing not only with. Financial matters of families and students, but we were also dealing with. Um, grades and other such things, uh, related to education. So we were in executive session. We came out. What you see in front of you is our recommendation for the award of scholarships. To the, the six students who applied. So, um, on behalf of the committee, I move. That we approve these and we embargo the list until, um, graduation awards night, so we're not. Releasing the information. Sharon, did you want a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Waiting for the little telephone box to light up.
Aye.
There it is.
Thank you, Sharon. And, uh, the, uh, motion passes and the scholarship committee has once again completed. Their very, very honorable task. And, uh. We have any other committee reports?
The townwide celebration committee met yesterday, Monday, April ninth. Um, Kurt was unable to join us, so it was me and Bill. Um, so what we do is, and, and you've got the minutes in front of you. Bill did them up for us. Basically, the DJ has been confirmed. Happy Cow's Ice Cream has been confirmed. Um, Jump For Fun, I believe Bill just told us, was confirmed. And Micro has provided the volunteer necessary to monitor. Um, and then there are some asks out and some things that are already coming through and you heard me asking the various department heads about their participation. Um, we have divvied up. The things that we need to get done. I guess the next step, well, two next steps. One is for me to get to Hannafords and other places. To make sure we have the food lined up for the cookout. And the next thing is to have enough information and sponsorship so that. We can publicize it in the circle on June first and we can get flyers printed. And distributed through the schoolchildren before they leave in June. So that's where we are.
Good idea. Kurt, what about? Go ahead, Sharon.
No, no, I just said, good job.
No, I, I was wondering, uh, before we had purchased local beef. Do you have any? Comments on that or, or I don't know whether all of the stuff is donated, Mary, or whether we.
Was a mix. I mean, I think we talked about the, the donor last year and that donor may or may not be in town still. So we've got to check out some of those things.
Maybe we'll figure something out.
Okay.
Yeah, let us know because you know, that's, that was very. Was very popular and I mean, when we have local beef producers right in town, I can't see any reason not to.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a couple, a few of them I can reach out to also.
Thanks. Um, we have.
Yeah, I'd like to, I, I, I'd like to add something. It was good beef, but the two cooks were outstanding, right, Mary?
You betcha.
Super, good job. Well, and I think it, I, you know, I, I, I envision that this is gonna be very well attended because there's a lot of. Pent-up demand for celebrating this town.
Yeah.
And rightly so. Good. I don't think there's any other committee meeting reports. Is there any other new business to come before the board? Hearing none, is there any old business to come before the board?
I had one thing, old business. Um, so last meeting, we. Signed the contract for admins for the engineering. I just wanted to make sure that got amended with the five thousand dollar cap on it.
Which is this one now? Kurt, refresh my memory.
For the, uh, engine, the prelim engineering for the fire station. Admin casering.
Oh, yeah. Alan Castle.
We signed the contract. But I wanted to make sure that it had the five thousand dollar cap.
Contract didn't specify a total not to exceed. It wasn't part of the contract, but that was communicated to them.
Okay, good.
We, we have that in, in an email.
It was in the minutes too.
The building clerk was responsible for communicating.
Yeah, within the minutes, Kurt.
Yeah, it was in the minutes. I just wanna make sure admins are well aware.
Okay, I think they are.
Yeah.
And if, if they're not, they certainly are now. That you brought it up, so.
I just don't want, didn't want confusion.
Good, no confusion, no confusion. We have completed the business of the meeting.
Move we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're done. Thank you very much. Good meeting.